I believe in the Senate Library at the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You approve the warrant, Debbie Martin.
Six, eight twenty-three minutes for session. It's not a public session.
I have something I'd like.
As Joe Wenzon, that was on the board, we did a policy for the new detail, uh, detail policy. And um, that policy was inclusive of town details. And that, if you will, look at the second page on that, the bottom right-hand corner, the total number there, fourteen, with some change. That is what the town of Ocam paid the fire department members to cover the fireworks on the Fourth of July. That's just the fireworks detail money. If you look, the pages over, you'll see what they're billed. We have a problem. Now, I spoke with the fire chief right after the Fourth of July, after I resigned from the board. And his answer to me was that he billed what the fire marshal's office would allow. Well, that's not the truth because the fire marshal, and I checked into it, does not get involved in anything like that. But why he would tell me that, I have no idea. That was not the policy we agreed upon, and that was the very first policy that we did. Now, I realize it's too late to do anything now because the bills are in pay. However, I think particular attention needs to be paid, and someone needs to be spoken to.
Thank you.
That's great.
I said we'd invite the fire chief to the next meeting.
Anybody else? See down under one fifty-seven rounds, just uh, from last week, uh, last meeting. Sorry, I wasn't listening at the time, it was two different calls, apologies. Just to give clarification for the board in regards to our licensing, I had emailed yourself on, Aaron, and the rest of the board. The reason I chose not to go individual licenses was an overall advantage effect. So this is what I do for a living. So when you have individual licenses, you have to set up SSO, which is Samuel Connection, and a skimbridge. Those are two different services which would connect to your office through sixty-five. I know, too technical. My point being is that so that your town administrator doesn't have to worry about managing people. You have to add groups, make sure it's managed, it's just one type of thing. But then every time that somebody comes on and off a board, you have to make sure that they're part of it, they're trained on how to record, how to upload, and whatnot, right? Obviously, I'm doing this as a volunteer basis through my company, System Systems, at no charge to the town, right? Just to give back. So the reason I chose the room licensing was, one, we have an awesome camera with a system that's all integrated. Comparative to having these individual licenses where you have to manage a computer, make sure the cameras connected, make sure the computers updated, make sure the software's updated, and that everything's working every single time. This don't need to do that. Now, with Aaron, you know, joining us, he had requested individual license. Obviously, there's a cheaper cost for individual licenses comparative to room licensing, which is more of a, you know, a broader spectrum, right? Where it's just easy, one-touch push, boom, done, right? You want individual license, that's cool, right? I, I just went with the system that we had proposed, when we had talked about it, where it was easier for everybody that isn't tech savvy. Tell me to update Windows, it's telling me to update Zoom, and at six o'clock, I gotta start the meeting. But you don't have to do that with this, you know? So again, it's different strokes for different folks, we're going down a different avenue. I just wanted to make sure it was clear that what I tried to propose was the least cost, least managed, cost-effective way to make sure that meetings are recorded, we're actually able to broadcast something to people live, as well as after day one, which is on YouTube, you know, after the fact. Obviously, I'm intervening still with that until our bill gets paid, and that because it's coming out of this warrant. So I've been working on Zoom on that. So again, I just want to make sure it's clear, I'm not trying to defend which way or this position, that position. I just want to make sure it's clear that yes, if you show Zoom license, it's cheaper. Managing that solution costs more money down the line. Yeah, compared to this, again, just throwing it out there, so thank you.
Um, I think it, um, the missing opportunity, I think, though, is um, getting input from others like the CIC, like other boards. And then coming to that consensus. I don't think that happened. I, I think it was um, you as a very helpful volunteer and maybe the board, but I do think um, it was not the purpose of all of the stakeholders. And um, I think now that we do have another estimate that, right now, is for ten licenses that you were able to get that estimate, which ends up being cheaper, financially cheaper, but also allows for more use outside of sitting in this room.
Understood.
So I think we have to juggle the opposing cons of both options now that we've been presented with more than one option. I don't think we, an option was, a second option was presented to the board when it's opted to go with it.
Well, to respond to that, so when I was on the cable committee, I did propose going down two different licenses. Yeah. The fact is, is that when I looked at not only talking to the cable company about their unwillingness to provide recording equipment, what equipment to purchase, to be able to broadcast over it, it was very expensive. Now, working independently with other factors, with YouTubers that do podcasts all the time comparative to being on the, um, I was invited to several meetings that Don had shared with me in regards to other towns and how they did it, they have a full broadcasting, right? So what I was trying to look for was something that was so simplistic. I could have went with a system, a system, Despros and this and that. I didn't, this was the cheapest thing, I found that was all-inclusive. So again, looking at individual licenses, having a secondary computer, the management factors, and down the line, and being in collaboration. You have that, my opinion, right? And obviously, I was the chair of that committee at the time, and I, you know, I said that I looked at the options, and this is what we had, right? And I thought that this was a cost-effective solution comparative, one, give a broadcast, two, individual licenses, three, room licensing. Thank you.
I, I think we're just paying the two-room license fees for the year now. I think we have some time to decide if we want to look at an option to have one license that allows it to be used outside of this building. Because right now, our only option, as I understand it, is to be in this room or potentially another room. So I, I think at least having one other license, but as you've said, um, with the, with the name of the license and, you know, what board is it gonna be?
Just to show you, you see this? Log into that thing remotely.
So it could be outside of, because that was one of the questions I asked. So the Board of Health wasn't in this building, you still can log in.
But I didn't have individual, like, we only have one individual license which was going to be used for the town, right? And so if somebody had to manage that, and this is what I was saying, right? Like, I can invite people, everything that's on my board, you can log into it. I'd say, yeah.
It can, it can be done.
Oh, yeah.
So I think we need to think that, oh, it could be done, not in this building. So like, if we had an annual town meeting, we'd set this up.
So that's the, that's why I had the second room, so that we could bring, I was gonna help set that up, make sure that next week goes well, bring it over there. That was my whole plan. Of course, yeah, that was the whole point.
I thought we were gonna put it in that wall.
Oh, not, not a wall, I have another cart. You just break it down, bring it, boom, done. Which I helped with.
Absolutely. And this is how many, was it five hundred users on this particular count?
Yes.
I think I saw that on the.
Yeah, but we had, many, we had less than three hundred physically in person. Yeah, I mean, virtually over five hundred, it's a lot. But then again, you also need to come up with that policy in regards to, at the annual town meeting, you allow remote participation compared to. I didn't see, when I looked at all the other town meetings, just to.
Only during COVID, there was an exception. But I think even if you can't vote to have that recording of it, I think it's really important.
Well, thank you, Brian.
Special state election. Except for November twenty twenty-three, from seven AM to eight PM. Special state election, who can lead from following offices, Senator in the General Court for the Houston District.
I would move we approve the warrant for the special state election on November seventh, twenty twenty-three, from seven AM to eight PM.
We have Ann Goby, Affairs Director.
Hello, I'm, thank you, Ms. Chair, appreciate, doesn't know what means this, okay? No, I appreciate, um, Aaron had asked if I would come to a meeting, and I was very happy to do that. In my new role as director of rural affairs, part of what the job entails, is that there are one hundred and eighty-one rural communities in Massachusetts. And the way that they define rural, if you don't mind, just to, because there are different definitions, but it's a community, under seven thousand people or less than five hundred people per square mile. Using that definition, there's one hundred and eighty-one communities that meet that under three hundred and fifty-one. So it's over almost sixty percent of, uh, of the population, so to speak. However, actually about sixty percent of the landmass, about fifteen percent of the population in those one hundred and eighty-one communities. Most of them are out west, because a lot up in the northern Essex County, down by the Cape, areas of Mathis Vineyard, Nantucket, those are rural communities as well, including the town of Gosnell, in Mathis Vineyard, with thirty people in Gosnell. And so part of my job is to go to all those one hundred and eighty-one communities to reach out and try to help with economic development. I'm under the Economic Development Secretary, Secretary Ron Howe is the Secretary for Economic Development. I don't know if you've had an opportunity, you've met with her?
No, not.
Um, very nice, very nice. And part of, uh, with the Hillary Driscoll administration, you know, they made a promise not to get the rural communities. And I think that, as we know, in the time that I'd been in the Senate, that we get forgotten, there's no question. And so part of my job to, not just to be really a cheerleader, is to really show that, you know, the urban areas need us. You know, and I think sometimes that that gets forgotten. Now, you think about, uh, the food that we provide, the water we provide, the air, the clean air we provide, the open space, and on and on and on. And so it's time that, that Boston and some of the eastern areas remember that. And so what I'm doing is getting around to meet with people. I've started with the one hundred and eighty-one town administrators, town managers, so members of the select board, that every week I do kind of a weekly call-in. And, and Aaron's been good enough to get on those calls, kind of giving an update on what's happening on the state and federal level. And so one of the big things that's happening now is that on the federal level, there's a lot of money coming in. There's about seventeen billion dollars that the feds are putting out, a lot for transportation projects and other type of projects. So Massachusetts, you know, we, we wanna get our hands on some of that. So it's seventeen, excuse me, seventeen billion with a B, seventeen billion. And so what the governor has done is that we have a rainy day fund, and she's using the interest of that rainy day fund to be able to leverage those, those dollars and working with the towns, because a lot of times what I've been hearing and what I've heard in the past is that towns will say, wow, I'd like to apply for that grant, but there's a match. There's a twenty thousand dollar match, we can't even come up with a match. So the idea about using that money is so that towns can do that, where we have to use that money for matches that they need. And, and the way that it works out, if we're able to leverage a couple billion dollars from the state to have access to up to seventeen billion dollars from the feds, that's a pretty good deal. And so, uh, every once a month, and I think, Aaron, were you on that call with the feds on Tuesday? Okay, so the Quinton Paul Free was appointed by the governor to be kind of a conduit to the feds. And so once a month, they get on a call with town officials, and if you don't have that, I will, I can get you the information so you can log on to those calls. And they talk about what grants are coming up and what you might be able to apply for and what the state can help you apply for. So that's something that has not been done before, we've left money on the table, if you will, and the governor made the promise that we don't want to do that. We're gonna go after every federal dollar that we can, because you know, when you think about it, right? It's our money anyway, right? So we might as well try to, try to get some of it coming back. On the state level, the one grant that I will be very involved in is the Rural and Small Town Development Fund. And that's under what's called the Community One-Stop Program. And I know that Ocam in the past has applied for, and I believe you've done pretty well in the past, but now, although I can't remember the last one that you've. Yeah, okay. So that, those are monies that are available as well that, that Ocam can apply for, and, um, you know, we'll, we'll help you through that process if there's something that you're looking at now to, to kind of get into that grant cycle, because that's going to be coming up. You have an opportunity, what my office will be doing is that, um, you can do like a statement of interest. So if there's something that you're interested in, there's about thirteen programs under the Community One-Stop, and it, it's a pretty user-friendly program. You know, when you're talking about things that are easy to do, right? So, um, it's a pretty easy program, you can kind of put in what you're looking for. So let's say it was a sidewalk repair, right? If it needs some for sidewalks, you could plug that in and it would immediately tell you which grants you could apply for. And you can do the statement of interest ahead of time, get that information into my office, we'll take a look at it, make sure that you're on the right track. And past experience has shown that about seventy-five, eighty percent, you don't have to do that statement of interest, but by doing it, about eighty percent of the people who've done that end up actually getting the, the grant, because it just helps you. And it's, so you're not going down the wrong pathway, because we know a lot of the smaller towns, you don't have grant writers, and it's really difficult, you know? It's the department heads, the, the chief or whoever that has the, right, has to write those grants, and they're not easy, some of them. This is a pretty easy process, and I don't know, have you done the Mass Works before, Kevin, three, yeah?
We've done two point four million.
Yeah, so you've done pretty well with Mass Works. So, yeah, that's good. But that's, you know, that's a, uh, that, that's because of you, you know, it's because of the work that Kevin has done and the town has put in, because it takes a lot of work to do that. So hats off to Kevin for giving that, that money coming in. So those are the kind of things that, that I'm going to be working on, and will continue to work on, but I'm happy there's anybody, Paul, you must have some question. I know Paul does. No, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I shouldn't have.
Paul Roche from Gaffney Road. One of the things I think that would really help all the rural communities, if the state would exempt the small communities from the prevailing wage. Small towns, if we can't afford to, you know, have contracted roofs put on, it probably costs us a million dollars to roof this building, okay? The church right next door would only pay about a third of that to do their building because they're, they're private.
Yeah.
And it's the same people, you know?
Yeah.
So all the little communities are getting beat up by this prevailing wage law. And I understand why, why it's there, it's to make it competitive so that the unionized shops can compete against the independent contractors. But the unionized shops don't even want to come into rural communities because the projects aren't big enough. And what happens is the towns can't afford to go forward anyway, so it doesn't even get done, and the small, you know, independents don't get to work either. So it hurts everybody all the way around. That, that's one thing I've been going after for years now, and I can never get an answer back on.
So I'm glad you brought it up. The Lieutenant, Lieutenant Governor has done seven statewide hearings, and it, they concluded on Friday. On Thursday, we were in West Boyston, and, and all of those seven hearings, I was at six of the seven, that came up at every single hearing, excuse me, every single meeting, that someone said, uh, we need to do something about prevailing wage. At least maybe to, to, to change the cap to do something for rural communities. So she heard that loud and clear, there's going to be kind of a municipal bill of some sort coming out. If you remember, probably about ten years ago, there'd been a municipal bill that had come out, it'd done some major changes on things, um, and some minor changes, like, you know, allowing towns, if you wanted to set your own speed limit for twenty-five miles an hour, you could do that without having to go through a big legislative, um, brouhaha. So she's, there's something that's going to happen, I don't know what it will be, but I can tell you that she heard that loud and clear. That came up at every single one of our meetings. The other one that came up at every single meeting was about having something for municipal buildings. Uh, we know that, you know, the School Building Assistance Fund, and looking to do something for municipal buildings, because of three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, three hundred and fifty-one need something. Either another police station, a highway, um, some sort of public safety complex, whatever it is, a work at a town hall or a library, whatever it might be. And so she heard that loud and clear as well. So I do think, Paul, that you're going to see something, I can't promise you what it will be, but she's heard it loud and clear, especially to do something for rural communities. And I, and the other thing that I'm trying to work on, and Kevin will be happy about this, is to try to make some chap, changes to chapter ninety, which funds the roads and bridges. The current form really does not help rural communities, because they don't count road mileage enough. And so if we just did, just to give you an example, if we just did road mileage and population, just use that, that would benefit about one hundred and forty-four rural communities and give them almost a sixty percent boost in their chapter ninety. Big money. And that, that's, that's going with maybe a twenty-five million dollars extra into the pot. So when you think about that, the amount that it, because what, what happens in the small town, um, you know, you have to, and you, you have to do it, right? You have to kind of like bank your chapter ninety in order to do a project, because it costs so much. And, and to your point, Paul, things are more expensive out, out of the way, because you're absolutely right, people don't want to come, we, it, you know, and some of the housing stuff, a developer doesn't want to come in to build three units, they want to build three hundred. And so everything becomes more expensive because of, of the scale, you know, you just can't do things. So there are a number of issues, that I, I, believe me, I have a laundry list of things that, that I want to get done to really help our rural communities, and, and I'll stay at it. So, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. School budgets and, yeah.
That's what I want to speak about here.
Yeah.
Alan Fly.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you there.
Hi, yeah.
Open that night grace lane in Ocam, and I'm chairman of financing.
Yeah.
So I've been on the finance committees for six years, Paul, who you've known for many years, stepped down. The six years I've been on the committee, the single biggest challenge has been the education budget. Last year, they came to us with an initial proposal, increased the education budget by seventeen percent. And they, we blamed the vast majority on that, on requirements and mandates from Boston, and that's kind of how it was put in the game. They dropped it down to seven percent at the end, so the town had a one percent increase in the town budget and a seven percent increase in the school budget. We can't continue to do that. Every year I've been on it, again, Paul spent four years, five years with me, and we learned a lot about the education budget. Every year, it's been much more than what the town increases. Almost every year, more than a two and a half percent increase for the quote, budgeted for. And if this continues, you can see a lot of small towns like Ocam have true financing problems, bankruptcy issues. Not next year, not the year after, it's building, and you cannot continue to have the state house of whoever's pushing the requirements on the regional school system. You expect us to finally pay for those funds, sacrificing police, highway, because they have the ability, and I know you know this, but they have the ability to basically tell us that they don't accept our recommended budget, and we have to accept theirs. And that puts you in a no-win situation, where we could be literally forced to reduce a budget for very needy municipal services. I hope you make that a high priority for what you're working on.
Yeah, and, and before I, you know, came into, to this, I, I, I don't work on that issue on a day-in, day-out basis, okay? I don't, so I don't want you to think that, that I am. Before I came to this position, though, uh, I was one of the co-chairs for the Regional Schools Caucus. And so obviously, you know, we know that that's an issue, we know that in our rural communities, because of the climate. We know that in our rural communities, because of declining populations, that it's a problem. You know, you look at the state of Massachusetts, like I mentioned, three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns. We have three hundred and seventy-eight school districts, even more school districts than that. You go to a state like Maryland, that's about the same size as Massachusetts, they have fifteen schools. They, they also have county government, so it's a little bit different. But things are very different in other areas of the country on how they do things with their school budgets. You know, we do things based on property tax. It's, it's, it's a tough issue, right? And, you know, in the smaller towns, it's very different. There is no question, you know? And two and a half, as you know, is a third rail.
It definitely is.
You know, you know, there's been some talk about trying to do something with the, the minimum local contribution on that little tick-up that happens, you know, to do something to, you know, there's been talk about trying to exempt communities from two and a half, like just that little tick-up every year. And, and how that might help the community. Because you don't want to pit the school districts, because everybody here went through school. You have kids, you have learning kids, and education is important. Police and fighting, so you don't need, you don't need to pit services against each other.
But every year.
Yeah.
It's the number one issue. That's what I'm saying. Anything you can do to help in that area is appreciated.
Yeah. I think one of the things too, and I know that regionalization is not always the answer, because regionalization sometimes doesn't save money, right? But there, there may be ways to share different types of services in other areas. And if you're doing that, you're saving money in other areas of the budget.
But again, you're saying that we should save money on the town budget to spend more on the school budget?
Well, not necessarily. Well. Well, I don't think I said, no, I don't, I didn't say that. I didn't say it. I said that there are ways to do things to maybe save money and to preserve services, because we're not going to change, you're not going to change the formula overnight. It's not going to happen. And so you have to kind of be creative, unfortunately. One of the things that, you know, we, we've tried to, you know, at least boost up the regional school transportation reimbursement. I know it's supposed to, right? So it's up to a little over ninety percent, I believe, this year. I know it's supposed to be a hundred percent, you know, and that's tipped up every year. Making sure that Circuit Breaker, the students who are in special education, that that gets fully funded, that helps. So there, there are things that can be done to help on the school side of the budget, that investments, those investments on the state side. Yes.
Steve Dowd, one fifty-seven Robbins Road, also on the committee.
Yeah.
You, I had written the Quavon Regional, that you were assessing what happened in the Quavon many years ago, which was the flooding, which caused the reservoir. Has your committee looked at like the proportion, like this small business, anything else that was kind of taken away from this area, maybe what, fifty years ago or something?
Seventy, seventy years.
I mean, sorry. But I was just wondering if there was, I read an article that EB Flats Road, and I was just wondering if anything's come up.
So I'm not quite sure I get the question.
So like in the assessment of, so there was, you lost all, a whole town.
Okay. So I, I, so the, the towns, the properties that were lost when Dana and Phil Grinch and Prescott were flooded in those communities, so the MWRA gives a payment every year. And so there is a payment that is given to those communities. Now, the communities within the water should have been saying, hey, look at, water really is an expensive commodity. You can't do anything without water. So maybe is it time to reassess that? So there is a bill within the legislature right now. Senator Jo Commerford, she's from Northampton and represents a lot of the communities. She has filed a bill to take a look at, maybe it's time to put a different value on what the water's worth. Is that what you're?
Yes, that's correct, because I know that they're looking at Brooklyn State Park as well.
Yeah.
In regards to more water, right? And like, how much more are we going to give?
Yeah.
So we get some of that. And that was just.
Yeah.
The only question. Appreciate yours.
Alan just mentioned percentages, but let me just break it down a little bit more. This town can raise eighty-five thousand dollars on the pro.
Two and a half.
The school alone came in last year with two hundred and five thousand. A mathematician, you know.
Right.
That's what he's getting at.
He meant that services was what you.
His only one thing to do is come. And we can't. You know, it's nineteen hundred people here, depending on the services.
Yeah.
And he can help us have a standard.
Yeah, I think, as I mentioned, you know, I, I'm not a legislature attorney. But, you know, part of it with that new Student Opportunity Act, the idea is that over a period of time, that it should help some of the smaller communities. But the other part of it too, as you also probably are aware, when I was in the legislature, we had started to do some lower rate, and so that Ocam did receive some funds from that. That started out when, when I was first in the Senate, three million dollars. It's up, it's up to fifteen million dollars this year. And according to the audits report, that should be about fifty-five million dollar bottom money in order to really make it's not a community solve. So there are things that are being done, you know, they're not being done quickly. But, you know, there's an acknowledgement, because you're right, Alan, I mean, it, it's not just, it's not just here. You know.
It's, it's, we understand that.
Yeah. It, it's every, it's every.
It's.
Yeah.
It's a problem with the same places, and nothing addresses it. A lot of rural communities are going to have serious problems three, five, and ten years down the road. I mean, it's just, it's building.
And you, I think you mentioned a couple of weeks ago that your office might be hiring a grant someone, because we have so little money to, we don't even have town administrator, which you know. How are we supposed to go out and look for grants that might help a small town like us without having that resource?
Yeah. So the, so a couple of things. The Central Mass Regional Planning Commission has extra money to, to do technical assistance, to help out. So that is one group that will also help. And there is someone coming in, I'm a, I'm an officer one, by the way. But I am having someone come in that is going to focus strictly on the rural small town development grants. And basically to help the community, to shepherd them, but to also follow that if they're given the award, to follow that contract all the way through, to help out, because we know that people don't have the capacity. There's not enough people to do it. So yes. And a, a person has been offered that position. I don't know if they'll accept it, but there has been a person that has offered, and hoping to have that person onboard by November twentieth.
And I'll just make an unrelated point, that the legislature pushed through a bill overnight, not following any of the standard processes, the gun bill. But yet, for how many years have they been trying to address this school funding? So they can do it when they want, but they've got the people east of four ninety-five pushing for them. And I think we really need people, rural communities pushing for us.
Absolutely.
And I just, I still made a comment, okay? And Anne's former role as senator, I know she was frequently in communications at the superintendent of schools up at Quavon. And I know her office worked tirelessly trying to help all of us. So I just, I want to be sure everybody appreciates all the work that I know you have done in the past for us.
No, thank you.
Thank you, and.
Thank you, Ann. Congratulations.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Except for December fourth, what do you, what's that? Or ten days. Looking at November twentieth, that it has to be posted. So then, looking at, I would say till then, but that's also getting it all in, giving it to council.
It would only be two weeks, which is.
I would do, I mean, if you do two weeks from now, you're bringing it down to the thirteenth. So it doesn't give a lot of turnaround time for council, I would, I mean. Four can do whatever they want to be, have a little extra time, should be probably shortened.
Because it has to be posted on the twentieth.
It has to, fourteen days. It's not business days, thank goodness, it's fourteen days. If it gets opened, let's say officially tomorrow, one week from that would be the seventh. Election Day. Two weeks would be.
So it's the fourth.
I mean, I think it's hard to be tight no matter what.
To review the, yeah.
You've got to, yeah, language on the articles. And still only do the one week, I would say, just because, you know, with town council, the back and forth, and even still work until that day. Now, as we move to the eleventh, that is a natural day.
Maybe thirty-first and close the seventh. I think it doesn't matter if we're closing, if when we're not even going to be having a meeting until the thirteenth, unless we'd be scheduling a meeting to.
No, I, I mean, I think in passing, it doesn't matter for the network. When, when is the selectmen's meeting? Because then you guys would have to approve them anyways.
Right, so couldn't get people until the.
Then you meet on the thirty-first in time. Are you remembering the date on the?
I would move that we bend the date of the special town meeting to December eleventh, that we open the warrant on the thirty-first and close it on the tenth of November.
Next up, we have Elder Services and COA for updated memorandum of understanding.
Hi, good evening. My name's Jim Burns, the program manager of the Meals on Wheels nutrition program. This is Sue Dunis, she's the area manager.
Hi, how are you?
Good. We've been asked to come to this meeting and just to have a discussion about the Meals program and whether or not there are any concerns or. We also sent a copy of the memorandum of understanding. And if anybody has any questions relative to that, we can answer it. And Sue has brought a lot of information about the program.
Program from money management to Meals on Wheels, Protective Service. What every consumer gets once they, they get something from us, they get a packet like this. Here are the Meals on Wheels and Congregate numbers for the year. And here is our yearly book, with Mr. McGovern did a Meals on Wheels route in March in Ocam. And he went to every single home, and he was delighted. Every single person wasn't asking up. And here's a picture of Ralph Mann. I have a book for everybody from Mr. McGovern. And also, there is a ten-minute video that I sent to Mary Bill that talks about Ocam for ten minutes on the state floor and how much everybody appreciates Jan and Meals on Meals.
It was on the, it was on the DC floor, it was on the House floor in Washington. So, yeah. That book is our annual report that we gave out at the annual meeting last, last week.
My first job as a social worker was at the Services of Western.
Oh, how nice.
Kathy Hudson was my supervisor.
Wow, she is still there.
Awesome. So, in your name, sir?
Aaron Langley.
Aaron, okay. I'll tell Kathy.
Two thousand.
In the year two thousand? Okay. Very good.
I think the only thing that I wanted to make sure is that we have a very active and new council on aging. And I think it's really important that there be a strong collaborative relationship between the chair of the Council on Aging and the Meal Program.
And you're the chair of the Council on Aging?
I'm Barbara Ryschinsky, I'm the new chair of the Council on Aging.
Hi, Barbara, pleased to meet you.
Nice to meet you, I know Susan.
You know, I've been in this job almost six years, and we really do our best to collaborate with every city and town that we've worked with. And I was talking to Sue about it last week. We need to get back to our annual visits to all of our towns. You know, we used to do it, you know, pre-COVID, and so I think we'd like to get back to that now. And so I don't know if we want to set something up.
I'd like to give a statement first, if I can.
Sure.
As we've had some issues. First of all, I'd like to, as from the Council on Aging, to express our sincere appreciation for the work of the Elder Services. Preparing, assembling, and delivering, is it twenty-six meals out of this facility to Ocam, Braintree, Hardwick, to homebound residents, is a valuable and necessary resource. And we really thank you for it. However, we do have concerns. By agreement, we're to provide a room or hall four days a week. And for us, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, between nine AM and 1:00 PM, suitable for senior dining and program activities before and after mealtime. We're to provide adequate lock storage and provide a means for trash removal. Often, we have a dumpster that we're allowed to use out back, but often, and I don't know if that comes back to the Council on Aging, but we see trash bags left, and we know that meal site participants will often be either taking them home or taking them to the trash or whatever. I don't know how that works. We've been doing the best we can with all of that. But in order to conduct our own senior activities during those times, we have for the past year brought in our own coffee maker, electric tea kettle, an apartment-sized refrigerator, and until last month, water, because we're not allowed to get water from the kitchen. We have purchased or had donated our own supplies, and we do not go into the kitchen. We have not for about a year. We have, at the least, not been welcomed by the site manager. We have been verbally criticized for our choice of activities, been reprimanded for the use of equipment like air conditioners. We've been told that decorations, tablecloths, et cetera, that are stored. And what we were told was our Council on Aging office belonged to Elder Services, and we are not to touch them. We are told not to go into the kitchen or dining area, even to decorate, because those areas belong to Elder Services and/or the site manager. We've had padlocks put on closets, not in the dining area, in our seated area. And without warning or explanation. And without warning or explanation. If the things that we're talking about in fact belong to elder services or the site manager, we respectfully request that they be moved to the elder services areas and clearly labeled or just removed if they are personal items. As the COA, we have cleaned, organized, and repaired areas of the senior center that had hanging wires, closets stuffed with elder services decorations in storage tubs. We have cleaned up or repaired unsecured boards and filth. Last week, when I received the elder services agreement, I was told that the kitchen would no longer be locked. I came up as usually, as I do at 1:00 PM on Thursday to set up for our Friday activity and the kitchen was again locked. My husband and I cleaned and moved the stacked chairs repaired again, hanging boards, clean debris, and moved to the tables in the dining area to provide access, easier access, and more comfortable communication between guests in the dining area. We had a speaker maybe three weeks ago at the long table. We chose to stay in the dining area for our speaker. Seniors at the end of the long table could not always adequately hear the speaker. Anyone sitting on the backside of the table had to remain seated during the whole process. Could not get a drink of water, could not go to the bathroom unless everyone behind the table got up and moved to allow them to leave, which interrupted the program, to say the least. On Friday, we hosted ten seniors for a pizza bingo activity and they all enjoyed time together with delivered pizzas. All of our lunch and lorrines have had either potluck that we brought in. We provided crock pots or whatever. We do not use the kitchen. We have tried not to aggravate or frustrate the site manager and we have remained self-sufficient. On Saturday, at a public event, one of us was asked, when are we going to put the tables back where they belong? I, I came up early on Sunday morning and all the tables were still the way we had set them for our activity. I took some things home to repair. When I came back by one o'clock, all the tables had been removed, replaced where they had been, and our things were placed in the middle of the sitting area just left. Now, unfortunately today, there was an interaction with one of our senior board members. And it was anger over this, this silly situation from the weekend. And that member has since resigned from the board. It should be noted that when the kitchen is locked with the screens, access to the electrical panel, either circuit breakers or fuses, is unavailable to anyone using the downstairs. So if there is an electrical problem, we cannot access it. Also, the phone in the kitchen for meal reservation receives not only your meal reservations, which is fine, but council on aging calls and messages that are then to be passed on. The council on aging needs our own phone line and you need your own phone line for meal reservations. And we need a means for private message retrieval. Many of the things that come in are confidential. So I have some questions to consider. Does elder services or their representatives have the right to tell the council on aging how to use their senior citizen space? What things actually belong to elder services that we should not be using? Is there any responsibility on the part of the site manager to provide a friendly, welcoming environment? Personally, I come in to put out our new sign early in the morning and I'll usually greet, good morning or hello. And it's either ignored, apparently unheard, or begrudgingly responded to, and I'm not alone. In light of our recent pandemic, are there specific guidelines for site and meal managers for masks, updated vaccines, cleanliness of the tables where people sit and floor? And I have the old agreement, so I know that's twelve years old and I see the new one as. So a lot has changed in twelve years. As chairperson, I feel discouraged through their efforts in trying to rejuvenate and reorganize the Okamp Senior Center have been met with such negativity. Many of us have visited other local senior centers. We've never seen a locked kitchen and all of them serve congregate meals and prepare Meals on Wheels. We've seen their facilities and their equipment. By comparison, we have been told, don't touch, don't do that, and have been restricted from full use of the facility. We have had computers and printers and furnishings removed without warning. We bring in our own personal computers and equipment for activities. We're working hard for the seniors of Okamp and are pleased with the positive responses that we receive from those we serve. This behavior of sarcism, sarcasm and negativity has to stop. Enough is enough. But we thank you for your willingness to create a more positive collaboration between elder services and the Okamp COA.
Acknowledge a couple of those things. First, I'm going to the locked gate and I was the site manager in two oh eight. I also worked at the library for eight years. That gate was there when I was a site manager in two oh eight. And I'm also going to address that you have a key diagram to that. And, and.
I don't.
Well, somebody in the COA does. And, and I, I. All those closets, we discussed that. They're yours. I told you. The only closet we have is a closet right next to the kitchen. That, none of that stuff was ours. It was Lucy's stuff. I, I discussed all this with you.
Then why, why are the padlocks, why are the padlocks new in the last couple of months?
I, how do I know?
We don't know either.
We need to ask your site manager.
I'm sorry, we need, you just.
They were on there.
No. I'm Janice Handerhand, vice chair, also on aging. The locks that are there now are different than the ones that were there before. They've been changed.
Well, I'll figure that out. But we. Did Lucy change them?
We haven't. We don't know. This happens when, when on aging is.
That was never brought up to me. And again, I, all this stuff wasn't brought up to me till two months ago and I started addressing it. I addressed it immediately.
We are not saying that you didn't address it. I'm happy for your coordination, Susan. I really am. However, when you're dealing day to day with negative remarks, sarcasm not being addressed. I, I have seen Melanie, I've seen Janice walk through, say, hi, how are you? What are you doing? And have the head turned and no response be given. That can only go on for so long. And it's been over a year that we have been walking on eggshells, not to aggravate, not to cause a problem for, for elder services because we realize how important it is. So we have tried, but that's why we are self-sufficient. Because, so as not to bother the kitchen and the dining area, we have brought in all the things that we find necessary to use while elder services is doing what they need to do.
But here's what I'd like to propose. I think that, you know, clearly there are some issues that we, we would like to discuss. And I would like to take those offline in a meeting. But I don't really think it does anybody any good to, you know, to talk about people in public forum. That, so I think that's better served if we have, if we, if we set up a meeting to do that. As far as some of the other things that, that you talked about, there are no COVID protocols anymore.
Okay.
So masks, okay, you know, we are a mask-friendly agency. So if folks, you know, decide that they want to, you know, wear a mask, then all, all well and good. But in terms of any kind of protocols for us, those are gone at this point.
And I will address the key situation. Melanie has had a key. And until we realized about the locked access to the electrical panel, we haven't been using the kitchen. We haven't seen any need to even use the kitchen.
We don't have a lock. We don't have a lock to the electrical panel.
Yes, you do.
That's where.
The screen, the screen is in the kitchen.
Oh, well, okay.
Yeah, so we are now devising a manner to keep the key on site. The other day, Melanie is not here. Melanie has eight hours a week. She can't be here every day. We had an issue where we wanted to get to the electrical panel. The Board of Selectmen does not have a key upstairs to the locked kitchen. We had no access to it. If there were an emergency, we would have a problem. So we are devising downstairs a way to keep that key on site.
Because it needs to be locked at all. There's nothing in the screen that says it needs to be locked. It just needs to be available.
We have a tiny bit of equipment in there, but she can, she's been locking her paperwork in the closet. Again, we didn't, that was all there in two thousand eight when I worked there.
But we could stop it now.
Up to you.
I mean, it's, it's not in the agreement, so.
And again, we, we didn't put it in.
I think my, my initial point was I think more communication, collaboration with the new council on aging is important. And clearly, it's been lacking, not necessarily anybody's fault, but it's a new opportunity going forward.
It, it really hasn't been a concern, Aaron.
There's new leadership.
I understand, but this is something that Sue has been attempting to address with progress ongoing. And so, you know, to be truthful, I was a little, little taken back that I'm coming to this forum to talk about this. Because I think this could be ironed out, you know, in an informal meeting with all, all parties concerned.
But I don't, you never got a copy of this, right?
I do now.
So I, I gave her a copy at the beginning of.
I gave the old one.
But I gave you the new one when they got the same day.
You gave me the old one. I got the new one. I, I.
Somehow I. I gave you the new one and Mary Bill went down and got it from you. So you're sorry. And then I sent it to your phone ten days ago.
I got, what I got on my phone was the old one. That's the PDF that I got on my phone. I just showed it to Aaron tonight.
So it's the council on aging that signs, it's not the board of selectmen.
I'm Sandy Ruschinsky. I'm just a volunteer for the COA. Well, anyway, my concern is that I think Jan's done a wonderful job. I'm not saying she hasn't. But she has charge of the kitchen, not of the dining area at any other time. Who has, I think the question has to come up, who has the right to use that dining room? She says we can't.
Okay, agreement.
Except the nine to one, Monday through Thursday, that's fine. But any other time, we can't put decorations out there, we can't change. She's telling us no, is what I'm saying. And I think that's what you need to meet, that's what you need to meet on.
Difficulty is, yes, we hear you. But on site, we are told something different. And that's difficult because you don't want arguments in the middle of the senior center where people are attending, et cetera. We are trying to make it as pleasant as possible for the people who attend here. So we are not going to air these things when everyone is there. That's, that's why we have brought in our own equipment. We have stayed quiet by ourselves. We have not tried to aggravate or interfere with anything that's going on there. So we have tried to keep it pleasant. That's what we're saying.
Okay.
And Susan, we did listen to you. We did. We did hear those.
And then, and then you went to the state rec.
I didn't go. She was here. She came to visit and she saw the locked kitchen and said, what is that about? I'm going to, she was going to investigate. I had nothing to do with that. That was, that was Donna Farmer going, seeing it and asking what, what it was about. She'd never seen it before. That's what that was about. I had nothing to do with that. So if you'd like to set up a meeting, it would be wonderful to iron these things out.
Would I have your contact information, brother? Do you have it?
Susan, do you have it?
I do, but I just want to make sure. Oh, I have the email address.
Then, then use that one. That's fine. That's fine. I do think the phone lines need to be separated in some way. And one way.
That's theirs.
That's not ours.
And one way to do that is, this is why I'm saying it now, is elder service should have a new number. Because the number that you have now for the meal site is the one that local seniors have used for years and are still calling. So they are not looking up a new number to make, to put in a COA concern. They're just using that number. So all those messages go to your meal site and we don't know what we receive and what we don't.
You shouldn't have to deal with that.
You shouldn't have to.
You know, I worked there all last week and I worked there two weeks before that. I heard every message Jan relayed. You know, I, I, I'm a little hurt. I mean, she comes out in snow, storm. She delivers like the mail. She has done three nine-one-one calls in this, just had one the other day. It's like, I, I really wish you had not brought this up in a public forum. It's not really. It's not really proper.
It is as far as the site, senior site itself is concerned. That's where the issue comes. Okay, she says everything belongs to me. The air conditioners belong to me. They don't. They belong to the senior center. She reluctantly tells us we can't use these things. So what are we supposed to say? She does a wonderful job. We're not taking that away from her. But
Deal with it.
What is the senior center? What belongs to the senior center as far as?
Everything belongs.
Okay, but we're being told.
Except for what's in our little closet. And I will take care of that.
We're being told we can't use it or we can't touch it. That's not the purpose of the person of the elder services. We know what you people do and you do a wonderful job.
Rick Andrew, Rick Road. I would just suggest that if you do have a meeting, I have Jamie too. So everybody has a chance to stake inside the case.
Yeah, we're going to. We'll send an email tomorrow.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening, folks.
With the I want to give a donation for this school here. Do we need? We're gonna need computer, right? Yeah, I want to do computers. It's gonna be brand new in a box. And then you guys can have your PC.
I don't want to go into what just happened, but I do want to talk about the phone system because I've seen this personally, okay? This two different phone numbers, okay? You have one, okay, for the Backdoor Cafe, which is eight eight two five two five one. The COA has got eight eight two four zero seven three. All right? When the phone rings for the COA, it can be answered in the kitchen. So the site manager picks up a lot of calls. And I'll give you an example, okay? A resident had called in, said he wanted to talk to somebody in the COA because he has a powered wheelchair that he wants to know if the COA was interested in, okay? The site manager took the call, said, oh yeah, we want the wheelchair. I want you to deliver it to this particular residence, which occurred, okay? It was not a decision for that site manager to make, okay? The site manager should have never even been involved in that call.
It was not a decision for that site manager to make, okay? The site manager should have never even been involved in that call. So those two lines have to be totally separated. The second problem is if somebody does not answer the COA's phone and it supposedly goes to the message recorder, okay? All these messages again automatically put on Lucy Testner's email. They're not going to the chair. All right? All that's going to be separated and done, okay? This can't go on. This has been going on for months and it's been talked about for months. The COA actually needs to have a totally isolated line, not part of the MyTell system. They need, they can't deal with any more interference. Most of these calls that they're getting, they're confidential calls, they're dealing with medical issues, personal issues. None of this stuff should be available to anybody else. They should need to go through the chair or whoever the chair gives, as far as a person on the council to accept. I mean, I, I can't understand why there's such a problem.
Well, you think they'll never read?
So I think, I think in, in Woo, I think authorization needs to be given to the council to get their own independent phone service.
I mean, I can just say, Board of Health has a direct line. It's part of MyTell and all voicemails go.
It's fine. You don't have another, you don't have another council, uh, uh, phone system picking up your calls.
You could get a, you could get another phone, which is part of MyTell with its own.
No, we don't, we don't want to be tied into MyTell. We want to be isolated from it. We don't want anybody else to have access to those calls.
Oh, you wouldn't if, if it was addressed correctly. I know Barbara and Jan had brought this to my attention. I started looking into it. We, I went downstairs, called with my cell phone. It rings on both ends. So we did start that. I contacted MyTell. I'm getting the ring around. It's not as easy. I haven't forgotten. I tried, but the number that, um, I have in the number that's listed, we were, we had like three different numbers that were connected. So we were trying to figure out, because when I go in the portal, it's listed as a different number. So it definitely, there's a lot.
For months and months, Lucy was telling the council that even though the messages are recorded, they could not be picked up because nobody knows what the password is and they're not able to reset the password. This has all been kept like totally secret, totally isolated. Okay? This is, this whole phone thing is a bunch of crap. Let the council get their own independent line. I mean, that, that's the total answer to it. Get them out of MyTell. Let them do what they want to do with their own.
I mean, you, the council would have to pay for it.
Well, you're making them pay ten percent of MyTell. And it's not working for them. So what the heck's the difference?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's being broken down, yeah. And it's been established like that since I started.
Yeah, you all.
Well, it's good. No.
No, uh, uh, just, just another secret thing that they get charged with and nobody told them about, okay? This whole thing is crap. Let them get their own phone. Let them deal with their own communications.
But now whose number Barbara had stated that she would like for the kitchen to get a new number because you don't want to?
Let, let the kitchen deal with that, okay?
No.
Oh, you, you.
Your agree, the agreement is that we provide it. The town provides it. And internet.
Since the lines are already in, and I don't know if MyTell is different from Maribel. But can we just disconnect all three and with those lines ask them to assign different phone numbers, just two? One for the kitchen and one for the senior center? And then neither one of them are old memory go-tos. And the seniors will learn that the, the kitchen has this number and the senior center has this number and they shouldn't cross at all. I mean, it, it, then you're not having to get new service, which is a huge expense, and you're just changing the numbers.
I mean, you have an independent phone line for the fax machine. I don't see why you can't get an independent number for the council.
How often is that fax actually used?
Every day.
Really? It's still using faxes?
It's solely for the, it's solely for the elder services, the worst stuff.
We do have a fax machine upstairs.
And it doesn't say that they couldn't be forced to use that. It just says they have to have access to a fax machine. That we're paying for two faxes that.
That twenty-two dollars a month from the Council on Aging goes to the fax machine.
I can tell. Yeah, so you. Yeah?
Oh, I see how much.
Are you, so maybe use that incoming Verizon line as a, a, a phone call-in, but change the number.
So you don't get faxes.
That's true, yeah.
But, you know, with the bill be the same, I'd probably eat more than twenty-two dollars. That's just a fax line.
No, it's the same thing.
Would be same line. Oh, I don't know. I haven't had a house phone in the first of all.
You get like, you know, dial-in sounds instead of.
The beep sound.
I mean, and do you have to pay for outgoing faxes?
No.
No.
It's the same, it goes over the spoke.
Can the town just absorb? All your other, your fees for using the fax machine today, do they?
So if they get rid of the fax on sale, they can.
Just use this as a straight price for the town.
A percentage amount of number. I mean, I don't know how, who uses faxes.
Not many people.
But I don't think that there's a, an additional cost. When I get the bill, it's always the same flat rate.
But I'd say.
And the other real quick question, okay? The laptop that was bought for the, the prior town accountant, which has been sitting upstairs in storage for a year and a half, and you can have these assigned to the COA?
Yes. I said, yes.
But, um.
And when?
Steve had also said that his company was going to donate.
I'm going to get it personally.
It'd be wonderful to have a site set up where seniors can come in and check there.
Do you want a desktop or a laptop? I'm going to buy one and just donate it, brand new.
I don't, can.
You choose whatever you want. You want a desktop or a laptop?
Can we talk to our committee for us?
Of course you may. I haven't bought it yet, but I'll, I'm going to get it within the next two weeks. Just tell me beforehand, I'll get it shipped and done.
He's going to do that.
I just want to, I think I saw what the.
In one for like a few.
Of course.
Can I ask one question too about the liability for drivers? You were going to check with the council. It's a, you know. Yes, I did follow up with, uh, with our insurance as well. And yeah, unfortunately, if it's a personal vehicle, the answer. It's fine. We can. We fall if anything happens, personal insurance. Well, and I just want to make clear who would absorb the, the cost for the setup too. I don't want that to be a surprise. Oh, we didn't know that we're going to get a.
I think the town can pay for it.
Okay. Just want to make it.
I mean, it couldn't be five hundred dollars. All we're doing is changing the username. It's got everything else in it.
Ever been set up completely. I'm talking about the initial setup.
I don't know that it's ever been used.
I want to make sure that we know. Okay.
Is there anything else that you?
That would be wonderful. That would be wonderful. That would be very much appreciated because my understanding is originally there was, like the libraries have, a computer setup so that seniors can come in and do their, whatever they need to do. When we're using one, well, the one that we no longer have was never used in that capacity. It was a personal use. And so to have another site would be wonderful.
Don't you also have iPads?
I want, can I ask you about that? No, 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 no. And I would love to be able to let them use them, but I don't know who set up the iPads initially because it's everything in town or in lock.
We can like those. I could help you.
We don't. I think those were COVID. I have no idea. I've never even seen the iPads. I, I, I. I, I guess. They must have been COVID.
Oh, I think they were, yeah.
But we, we weren't here then. I charged them. That doesn't mean I won't be awake tonight thinking of something.
So would, would you, um, with the COA review the memorandum, um, and at their next meeting? I mean, I, I looked at it. I think it's a boilerplate. I, I think it really is writing what's expected. It doesn't talk about padlocks in. So I think if you end up accepting this, there should be no question of what's appropriate.
Right.
And hopefully have a new relationship moving forward.
If, if, if that was, if even the old agreement were adhered to with just what was done on that, it would be fine. The power has reached out to consume other areas and that's been the problem.
I mean, um, it was shared, like the tables were moved, the tablecloths were removed. That's just silliness. Put right back.
We're planning on it. Uh, yeah, what we were hoping is that by changing those, um, because we were told they won't like that, give them an opportunity to see if they like it. Don't put them back before they even see what we've done. So if they don't like them, we're happy to change them to something that's easier for them or whatever. But in the meantime, we'd like to see if it works.
There's ten chairs that were inaccessible to somebody in a cane or walker. It just made no sense.
Or if they tried to get out, they could easily stumble over the legs of the chairs or whatever. It just was not appropriate.
Of course, can be scary.
Next, Wendy Griggs.
Hello.
Hi.
So the board asked me to reach out to the bank to inquire about online payments. So I reached out to our Canadian bank, which has a product called UniPay. I've, uh, used many, many years in a couple of different towns. So the only fee that would be related to the UniPay would be the ACH processing fee, which would be electronic, if you use an electronic checkout, yeah, um, checking account, that would be fifty cents per card. So if you had three bills, you put it all in one cart, we'll charge you fifty cents. If you wanted to use your debit or credit card, it's convenience fee and it's like between one and three percent. Yeah, so it'd be. Yeah, right, like these are two. So there is, uh, on their website, there, you can go in and you can see what the convenience fee is. And it won't charge you until you actually approve the fee. So you wouldn't get to it and then just hit enter. It would say, I ensure you want to approve these fees before you accept it. UniPay is a twenty-four seven secure, user-friendly system that can be used for any town collections. I don't know, pass, pass through taxes, donations, collections, departments such as building, clerk, the Board of Health, the police. You can set up all those different departments. I have set up all those departments in other towns, quite familiar with it. Uh, the bank actually works with each department to get, you know, what they would like to collect, you know, try to make it a little bit easier so that they can pull a file into their software. One important thing to note, it, it is, maintains full functionality when used with a mobile device. Because I know a lot of people these days use their phones to pay the bills. But they have other, uh, options too, like bill present, uh, present, presentment, which is a two-year image history. So someone who's doing your taxes, you can go in and you can print it out so you know exactly what you paid on your, your taxes. There's also an auto pay feature, which allows the residents to set up automatic payments for their bills to pay full amount of the bill on the due date. But there's also scheduled payments, which allow the residents to schedule one future payment at a time versus enrolling in an ongoing auto pay. They have email and text notifications. So if you sign up for it, it'll remind, it'll tell you that there's a bill out there and how much it is and remind you to go in and you can pay it right there. Like it'll bring you right to that page. Pay by text. I guess I already talked about that. A bill allows your residents the option to receive an email along with a notification directing them to use the bill. And they have quick pay, which is an extension of UniPay, which allows you to accept credit debit cards at the counter. So, um, I'll get a swipe. So if someone comes in and they want to pay with their, their debit or credit card, they'll, they'll be able to do it right at the office.
What's the cost to the town here?
There's no cost to the town.
So is that the convenience for the taxpayer?
Yeah.
Um, so there's no cost to it.
Right, so they pay the fees.
Because I can tell you, I pay more than I pay for my taxes every single year because I pay a late.
Me too. That's the same, same thing I do.
Yeah, see, that'll avoid.
Because I just want.
You'll get a reminder.
Yeah. That's weird though, that they don't push it on like nothing to, something, there's got to be a catch. They just push it on to the, I, I understand, like. Well, it goes to us. It goes to the person. Right, right. Yeah. Well, I'm saying because their database and do we get all these features unlocked or is it like?
Well, we pick which features we want.
That's it.
And they, and UniPay.
But they don't charge you for that.
And they work with Civic, is it Civic Plus? Yeah. So, I mean, you see all these other towns.
Yeah.
Everybody's on.
We can add the link right to the website.
I don't know exactly how many, but it's well over two hundred.
Yeah.
More than fifty percent.
And it's user-friendly too.
Almost.
But the catch is they get to hold the money. Like the money has to go to that bank. You can transfer it out, but you couldn't send it to CNTN Day or, um, TD Bank. You know, it has to go through that bank.
Is that a bank currently?
Yes. I would recommend it.
So, yeah, I, I would love for the treasurer to work on, um, setting this up as an option for individuals who would like the convenience, um, of paying bills online and working with the departments, um, should they choose to offer this as a convenient option. That would be a motion.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Um, and I had some questions. Um, Harper's payroll. Do you know if, um, I mean, I know we have Harper's, uh, that processes the payroll. Do you know if we pay for currently, my company is with Harper's. I go in every two weeks and submit my time. Um, I approve my people's time. Is that an option for people to put their time in? Do you know?
That is an option, but we.
We don't pay for it. I'm just, I, I wonder, there's a lot of time spent on paperwork, having it brought in, scanned to the accountant. I wonder what the cost benefit would be, um, of, um, having that as an option, if we've ever looked at it, um, to see the efficiencies.
Jan Hopkins, can you? Add in vacation time.
Yes.
Track all that.
It'll track all that.
How do we do that now? Paper and pen?
Paper and pen. Yeah, a lot easier because employee gets their paycheck.
Yeah, I should say it right now.
You can see what, you can, you can go into Harper's and you can see your balance.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wonder about that too.
There was, there was one other thing I was going to ask. Do you remember what it was?
Did say something.
Mail machine?
What is it?
Mail.
No, that was, yeah, unrelated. Okay, that's all right. I'll, I'll remember next time.
There's something we have to do for the bond.
Um, I think I have all the paperwork now. I just scanned it to her. So hopefully tomorrow she'll let you know if there's anything else. And then they'll, um, produce the schedule.
Okay.
Something to be voted. Yes.
Just to be official, do you have the form? Okay.
Okay.
She's, uh, well, it's along of the, like a ten year.
And I think, I mean, can we vote on that since it was not expected at the chair?
It's on here.
Oh, it is on. Nice.
We talked about this for the annual, it's a ten years.
That's what we're talking about.
Maximize the life of the fire truck to be financed. Proceeds of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars borrowing authorized by the town vote passed June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. on a town vote passed June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, Article eleven, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three ballot question. Do you by determine pursuant general law chapter forty-four, section seven dash one, be ten years?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One of the assessors.
So I'm here tonight to discuss a, one. Board has had a discussion with the previous assessor. And we, between Peter and I, have discussions over the years with various select people. And people from before the board have asked for copies of personal handbooks, personal policies. So now we have a new assessor and come to find out former assessor worked here seventeen years without a single paid vacation day, sick day, holiday. And there it is in your general bylaws that says this person was entitled to all of these benefits. And now we have, have a new clerk. And now it's the assessor and it's come to our attention. This was the documents that we really should have seen or been told about many years ago. Priscilla said she doesn't recall who told her when she first started here. Her time was told that she wasn't available. There was no benefits for her. So all of those years, she went unpaid for all of those. All of that. And now a new one wants to be compensated. And of course, retroactive because somebody, other, whatever. When you sign the paper, you do your W-two's and all that other stuff. When you sign up for the town, shouldn't somebody have told her? And I don't know whose responsibility that is. There's no HR person, there's no town administrator. But for years, personally, have asked about personnel policies in the forty years I've been working in municipal government in five different towns. They all have personnel handbooks that spell out all this stuff that's buried in your general bylaw. So I guess I was asking for the wrong document. So even when that person was here doing your, writing all of your.
Job description.
Job descriptions and complained to him that it was all of this missing stuff for part-time employees. Any other part-time employees not know that they're, they have benefits available to them? I mean, I, I'm here to rant and I'm here to find some compensation for these two individuals who went all this time without a single paid something. That's my rant. And how we're gonna fix it. And I'm not going forward from this day where they start something. These people are owed something.
It's chapter six under the personnel rules and regulations. And it clearly provides a part-time employee in what they're eligible for. And a part-time employee is someone who works, employee scheduled to work less than twenty hours per week, fifty-two weeks per year. And it describes the holiday benefits to sick leave, the vacation leave for part-time employee.
Have a read, I believe. You know, Priscilla was here through all that time when her dad was sick, the dad died. I mean, all the people to take time off. She was paid for that.
Any regular part-time employee who works less than forty hours, twenty shall receive vacation pro rata, depending on whether it's actually worked.
You know, so you work two days a week, you get two vacation days. I don't know, I just, I. It's such a loss to find that out.
The end of the fiscal year.
And you, you sick leave will not be compensated at the termination of employment. It will be forfeited.
Vacation.
No.
Not on that.
I will say, related to this, I saw in the Barry Gazette that the town of Barry is looking at a, an HR person, kind of Rutland, I believe, is looking at an HR person. The town of McBrantree is looking at an HR person. I think this is a, an obvious area where we are at risk in light of the fact that our bylaws clearly state one thing. And doesn't look like, because we don't have anybody really responsible for it. I think we need to talk to town council. I think your branch tree is in the process of looking at somebody.
Yeah, the lady was talking about asking for regionalized.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't think we can not afford
No.
To continue on this. Yeah. And, and I know, you know, on these Thursday meetings with Ann Goby, you know, I brought up a couple of things and other all-town administrators and like one or two boards of selectmen on these calls. But, you know, I, I think that's another resource that we could reach out to of how other towns are doing it as small as we are. And this also goes to the fact that we need to look at our bylaws and really.
This is a library.
Postal library.
Yeah, she, she was told she, we're always open to make kind of hours.
But the weird thing is the bylaws don't say a minimum. It just says regularly scheduled less than twenty hours per week. So the board of health has a clerk that works between three and six hours a week. According to the bylaws, in my opinion, she's out looking for leave because the bylaws don't say that what her, what she was given on hire said she was. Yeah. While you're here, I, I wonder, one of the things that I've had, some people ask me about are what are the available abatements for residents of Ocam? And I'm just wondering if there's, I, I believe we have an abatement for farm, the farm equipment that the town voted in a few years back, that excise tax is waived for certain farm farms. I believe we have a senior sixty-five and over. I don't know if it's the veterans, where veterans and seniors, if they can volunteer to reduce their taxes. Have we adopted that?
We have adopted senior.
Okay.
Worker.
So looking at other towns, it seems as though there are additional options available. And I'm just wondering if our town has recently looked at all of the state allowed ones to design.
For the Sunday agenda sometime, I'll come in and do a little. When you've been sorting. As we voted in summer. So there's one specifically for veterans. Even if you just get one that qualifies, it's a good thing.
But that has to be at a town meeting. So, yeah. But then the assessors have the forms and they would decide if they're eligible for it. So, yeah, we had a, I had asked if I could organize a cleanup of the third floor and second floor. We had people volunteer for that and someone to volunteer for helping the building commissioner. We have a nice application for appointment, which is really for like.
I know you did.
Yes. Application for appointment too. That's what's online is the volunteer application. But I also noticed that, how do you decide who you pick? Like, under what conditions would you accept a volunteer? Do we do query checks? We don't really have a policy on that. And I provided the board. I did a search of the web on volunteer policies from towns. And I provided one from Wilbraham. And I think it would be beneficial to have a, a policy that goes along with the application so that we're not, we don't get in trouble down the road for whether or not someone, if there's a health insurance claim, you know, it clearly states that they're, that they need to have their own insurance. Obviously, if they get injured while volunteering, there's a, we're responsible for them, but there may be query checks for certain volunteer positions. So I'd like to see some, a look at creating a volunteer policy. I'd be happy to draft, update, steal the town of Wilbraham's and insert Ocam and remove some of the, like the town administrator. But there's, as a starting point. I did look at the MMA. I did not find any sample policies, ask municipal association. And I don't know if we would want town council to look at it, but I believe you did get input from them.
I did.
And they said, at a minimum, we would want a whole harmless, which I provided a copy from Westford. So we won't just steal all Wilbra- Wilbrahams. But there's an adult release of claims and then a minor release of claims that we should have along with the volunteer policy. And I know Chris Dunbar, who worked for quite a bit, oh, no, not Chris Dunbar, sorry, Ray Duffy, who worked for the Red Cross and another volunteer organization had offered to assist in looking at policies based upon experience. And I guess right now I would ask that we approve Susan Turnbull as a volunteer. Since she did apply two weeks ago. She submitted an application. Yes. I'll work on that. And maybe if we get an HR person, they'll come with a whole book of all these.
Release of claims.
They probably have a standing.
I'm sure they do.
Go ahead, Joe.
Joe.
Oh, I feel we still rode. Where we at?
We don't really know.
Well, yeah, you know, really no. Everything out of spectrum. More national grid, pretty much. There's no, and just an excuse they passed the bug. We're into this eighteen months, approximately fifteen, since they took a check for ninety-eight thousand dollars. And most we've gotten done is some tree work. And I hear on the other side of town, they may have started running a line, but that was just recently as of September. So it's been a long process and trying to deal with these companies is damn near impossible. You get no information from them. We're in the dark. And that's it. And the tree work on our road still isn't even done. We're told it's done, but it's not. So. I don't know. Wish they had more answers, but.
I can add. So we were told in June that they would be done by, I'm sorry.
So you think.
Lynn Thompson. Sorry about that. We were told November, December to be completed of this year. Oh, we got trees.
October.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think it's gonna be complete.
So.
No. And they just don't care.
They just don't answer.
They don't respond. They don't answer. They don't do anything.
Joe, if I may, Ellen Fly, Grace Lane, here in town. They've been on Grace Lane running lines the last two weeks. They're, they're, they're done. I mean, I think they're done. They were pulling the last lines it looked like yesterday.
Okay.
Well, that's something anyway. So they, they are, again, defendants. I think they're. But they are.
Progress just recently started since September. So I mean, up until that point, you know, we were dead in the water. Nice to see things are getting done, you know, but still can't get answers out of them, you know. I but attention the other day. The tree work on our road wasn't done and I just got told, well, you know, when they come to run the lines, they'll notify somebody. You know, another excuse to delay the project.
So our officers have been working details for the tree companies and the guys running the lines for approximately the last three weeks, maybe almost up to a month. They've been working on Grace's lane on and off. They worked on Sanders Road.
Yep.
And I think they were up on Lincoln Road too for a little while.
Right, yeah.
I know they run a line like Alan said, if they, yeah, they ran it down Grace's lane and they're also running it on Sanders at the pedestrian speed.
Yeah.
So Friday, Friday, they have a school out there and they were.
Since September.
Right, right, right.
Until then, we were, you know.
So mainly been the last three weeks of honest work.
Yeah, actually, yeah. And we had, did have some committee member changes, which kind of screwed us up a little bit, trying to get the information, contact information, stuff like that. So I think we're back on our feet somewhat at this point. But like I said, up until September, progress was extremely slow, frustrating and aggravating. And all of a sudden, the committee would love to be able to come to the town and say, you know, we're doing everything we can and it's moving along nicely. It, you know, but it kind of feels like we let a lot of people down. In my opinion, it does. We took this, you know, to help everybody in town that didn't have it. And trying to deal with these big corporations is horrible. They just don't care about us. They don't answer questions. Like I said, they don't respond, nothing.
Spectrum supervisor was on Sanders Road the other day. So if I see him again, I'll get his card, his business card for you.
Did you get his name?
I did not. I just kind of drove through and he told me he was.
I was gonna say, do you guys have any contact information for John?
Yeah, Dyer.
Yeah, he's the one that Suzanne. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty regular with them.
I know that Suzanne had stated before she stepped away that after they got the first half of the check, communication had pretty much fizzled down.
Since we issued them a check for ninety-eight thousand and six of twenty-two. And they've been sitting up until September.
Yeah, so we don't know when they're gonna ask for the other.
I think it's supposed to be upon completion.
You can't ask.
They could ask.
But that may be, you know, like I said, we, we wish we had better news for everybody that doesn't have internet because our road is one of, we're frustrated, but you know, but.
They still have to change the polls on their road.
Yeah, well, that's another thing. We can't even get a definite answer. We've been told two polls. We've been told all the polls. And now, you know, that was when they wanted us to pay for it out of pocket. Now that they're getting the check, it's a fixed rate. I'm curious to see, is it gonna be one poll or any polls? Now that's coming out of there. So, you know, good luck. Good luck trying to get an answer.
Any polls in the market are big white.
Cable company, any polls in the market with a big white X, that's national grid. The cable companies will not run string line on those polls with those big Xs on until the polls are changed.
What, two on East Hill?
Yeah.
I know one's on my property. I know one.
Yeah.
So. And they, once again, when you talk to Spectrum, they say it's up to National Grid. National Grid says it's up to Spectrum. They keep passing the buck, bouncing it back and forth.
Well, I know they changed them all, which race the plane, I believe.
All the polls.
A whole new poll.
Yeah, they put all their polls from where we are up. And when the, Evan built his house, they had to put new polls in there down to get the permit for the building.
Yeah. As I said, up until September, things are still pretty bad. So we're doing the best we can. You know, we wish things were different for everybody, because we certainly know how frustrating it is for everybody not to have this internet.
Phoenix is.
We're hoping so, you know.
Where?
Hope you're late.
Really?
Phoenix is putting on the window guard away right now. Out of this whole cable thing.
How about the cable contract? Isn't that also up for renewal?
Yes.
I didn't have much to do with that one.
The last meeting we had, when we were still a full committee, Kathy Dunn, you still rode, by the way. As a committee, we voted not to renew the cable committee, the cable contract. And over the summer, we were all, it was shared to us that it was contract out, it was due in a day.
We were told we didn't need one, that we do need one. And all this depending on this YouTube stuff along with everything, so.
We have it in our minutes. He's the one who told us we did not need a cable contract. Yeah, well, and again, we were, we were not told any of this. I might have been here, which.
This is the email from town council or what happens on.
Yeah, anything that we could, any information that you guys have would be great, because we're in the dark.
The cable end of it also depended on everything that you got going on here as well, public access, YouTube, this, that, the other.
The license has nothing to do with that.
It had to be worked on.
The license has nothing to do with who's got cable or not. It's a ten-year license for the town, the entire town.
Right, we had to make requirements, though.
No.
We, we were told otherwise. Is it possible for us to have the board of selectmen ask old committee members for documentation? Because we're.
What documents you need?
Anything, because we were completely left out of the loop on a lot of this. A lot of, a lot of things were done outside of the committee.
They have a committee email. No.
Well, if we do, we don't know what it is.
Yeah, I'm like, I've never emailed.
No, I usually just email it directly from my own personal.
And that's what I emailed you for though.
Next members we're using their private ones.
I think that a couple of the members that were formerly on the cable committee. They had other towns, so maybe that's. Maybe, I'm just saying, could have gone, I have no idea.
Why don't we have the setup?
That'd be great.
And I can forward a lot of the material to you.
Sure. That'd be great, because.
If you need financials and all that stuff.
I've already submitted stuffs, public record.
You shouldn't have to submit anything but a email.
Yep.
And you need this.
Yeah, we're just, people are asking us, so we're like.
So we'll call it like CIC.
Yep, yep.
When does the contract have to be? I mean, that. Cable, yeah. Oh, it's only cable? They wouldn't shut off our internet, which is part of.
You're welcome.
And Lucy is the select board member. Working with the cable internet committee, is that correct? Was there a select board member, part of that is?
That's news to me as well.
Yeah, that's.
Assignment for us.
Okay, I thought I remember reading that somewhere.
Good to know.
May want to change that.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to be a contact.
How often would you, I mean, would you like us to just pass on information to you guys when we get it, or do you want us to, once a month, or? Okay.
Everything is time sensitive. The more we know, the quicker, the better.
And, I mean, does the, would it help if the board of selectmen, I don't know, to. The person. The supervisor is what I meant to say. To ask them to come to a board meeting? I mean, would they even acknowledge that? I mean, they don't really care about small rural communities, but we don't have a choice of who to use.
Exactly.
And invite the CIC to come to that meeting, as a joint meeting.
Great.
I take them two months to come.
Do you have some contacts? I don't, okay. Yeah, I don't have, because I think Suzanne did most of the, or at least. Emailing with John. Is that my copies? Yeah, we have copies of his emails, so we have it here.
And you can either give it to me or just email it to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments on the radio also, not on the board. I did a lot of research on the budgets we put together. I think we have something we should pray forward to talk about.
Want some water? I've got some. I've got one, but I didn't. Yeah, water in the other room.
Right, so. Sure. One of the things I did. This is started, keeping up with notice a couple of months ago, I brought your attention to the last meeting or the meeting before. That we were way overspending what was in the budget for our time help. And I started thinking, how did this happen? What, what's there? I went back and there was emails from you, from myself, from, to go back to stuff from Brad Conde at the meetings. One of the things that came to light is, we repeatedly said it was a full-time chief and a full-time officer. We needed thirty-two hours of part-time help. And. I, I mean, I have, you literally saying that in an email to me when I was asking questions, that we gotta cover thirty-two hours of part-time help. And it would be happy, I, I found some information that said that the, I think it was eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents, is that a correct number for what we used? If you look at what we funded for part-time help for, we only funded twenty-seven hours. But I think somewhere when we were doing the numbers back and forth, something about five thousand dollars dropped out. I don't know why. I, I could not find it, but I think a mistake was made there. Unless it's something you know that you did that I'm not aware of.
It also had twenty thousand dollars being reimbursed.
Right.
Part-time wages from state. So we factored the twenty thousand in, and then it evaporated. And so I did some research myself, and I talked to Laurie. And I asked her what hap, what had happened, and she said unbeknownst to myself or Sue. They were using that money for the other end on the. School that everybody went to. So every time somebody went to school, it got paid out of that. So I, we were all counting on the twenty K, and it just never showed up.
It's, yeah, it, I mean, I'm sure it's there. I'm just saying that when I went back and looked at it. If you were trying to fund the full police force for full and part-time, we did underfund it based on the budget. Now, again, if there was money that was in some grants or something that wasn't built into the budget. That's, that was beyond anything that I could find any reference to in any of the meetings we had.
Don't you bring that up. You may not have funded the two and a half percent increase.
That could be too.
You know, that's, that's a good thought.
I'm just thinking about that.
It's, it's like a five thousand dollar for the year difference. It should have been, I have it just under thirty-one thousand is where I think it should have been. In hindsight, at time, and I'm not sure how we got to the twenty-sixth, because there was a lot of moving parts. As we got close to the town meeting, you know, there was, there was a lot of communication between everybody. But I, when I saw that, I said, okay, well, that's a five thousand dollar miss that somehow occurred. That had nothing to do, like, so this today, so I didn't know what numbers Brett was looking for. I just knew that, I felt we had maybe underfunded that one area. It's just, just making an observation.
Yeah, that's.
And I might have been going to give you a half, too. Yeah, good, and that'll say.
The other part of that, too, there was an unusually high burn rate for the part-time budget. Due to the fact that we've had an unusual amount of crimes that required a detective to investigate. My detective is part-time. We had a, you know, I can't speak to the names, but I can tell you that we had a couple of sexual assaults. We had a child pornography case. And we also had a, a registered sex offender in town who reoffended. And was released and came back, and we had to investigate him again. And I had three officers from the part-time part of the department stuck in court for months dealing with this guy. But in the end, I gotta say it was worth the investment, because he got another eleven years, and he's now back incarcerated.
And those were twenty-four expenses, in other words, the current fiscal year expenses, most of them, or?
Yeah, they, yeah, they, a lot of it fell onto this, onto this cycle, yeah. So the burn rate was a little high due to that, and I mean, that's unforeseen. It's kind of like, you know, Kevin weather salt and sand, we can't really predict. What's gonna happen at any given time. And if we have a major storm or something like that, and I have to call resources, and that's also gonna tap into that as well. So any future things like, you know, unanticipated. Basically, funding I needed for storms or whatever. I think I wrote that, wrote that in there.
You know, it's, it's coincidental, but your total request for new money is about a thousand dollars more than what I think the shortfall was in the initial funding. I think just, again, I suppose.
And you think that will get you through the year, even though you're not counting on?
Yeah, so what I did was I, I calculated the thirty-two hours. Then I calculated vacation and sick time, and I also calculated unforeseen circumstances.
Oh, yeah.
So that's, yeah, so that bottom line number is what I need. I have twelve thousand, three hundred dollars. Yeah, let's see what I wrote down again. It's twelve thousand, three hundred dollars left from the reimbursement grant, which covered the training. And so that money can go in there. If I do a line item transfer of ten thousand. All I really be asking for the finance committee to approve, or for the board of selectmen to approve is sixty-two forty-nine twenty-eight.
Really, the board of selectmen question first on, I mean, that's your guys' decision. We would, you know, then go to finance committee, I can speak for them, because I'm the only one here in store the members, but. Again, I, I feel that there was a correction that we could have made if we had cut it to the initial budget that we put together last year.
You also mentioned in here the training expense account. That's where you want to transfer ten thousand out.
Well, if to keep it within my budget, yeah. If I go outside of my budget, and you want to make it ten thousand, six, two forty-nine, that would be. Sixteen thousand, rather.
What I'm getting at is, we can't transfer ten thousand out of the budget mid-year.
Okay.
We have to wait for the special article on, have the promoted, move into the envelope.
Yeah.
Line item, all the ways, you gotta wait till May.
Right.
If I can wait till May.
No, no.
Something like this.
And you have it till the ten.
So would that be the special compounding? I don't, that may make sense.
Or sixteen, or, or so the, it would be the ten, and then an additional six?
Yeah, I think the, the total number would then change to sixteen thousand, two forty-nine.
But it's only six thousand.
No, no, it won't change, because the six is raising appropriate, ten is being transferred.
Okay.
It's already appropriated.
It's, it's stayed here.
Oh, okay.
So.
I'd be in support of. Freddie gave me this when we came in, because we were talking about it. Makes sense from his perspective, just informally, so I think we would have no problems.
I think it, let the town vote. It's reasonable.
It'll be two. One for the six, two for the nine, and the other ten thousand for transfers.
And the town meeting is going to be, that'll be eleven of December. You have enough money in the account to go through till then. I believe you do. But you may want to check that.
Yeah, what I've done is, we would have used the part-time, like on a holiday, I actually worked Veterans Day. Just not, you know, we both actually worked, the full-time guys both worked. To spare us for, from spending the time and a half week that we'd give them on holiday. And a couple of days during the week where we could have used them, I actually wanted to work in bubbles.
You said about ten thousand.
I saw you. I'm like.
What are you doing?
Twelve thousand, five fifty-five remaining right now. So you're gonna have the, that's after October, so you just have November, you'll pay for it, and it's not gonna be close, so you should be okay. Yeah, you'll be.
Okay. We do have a lot coming up next month. I'll be Roger Williams University from the thirteenth, was it the sixteenth? All in-service training has been reduced to online. So officers will be doing the in-service training while on duty in the station. Except for the mandatory in-person, which gets, which gets paid out of training anyway.
Right.
We just had our fire rounds, we have research for Taser coming up. So that's, I think that's early November.
A bunch of grants.
Oh, glad you asked. There's a lot of material there. So we were approved for the camera grant. And the contract is in, and I'm just waiting for them to co-sign it and release the funds. So as soon as I, I get that letter of acknowledgement back from them, we'll be able to buy the, the body worn cameras. We did receive another, almost five thousand dollars in highway safety grant money. And what I'm thinking about doing is, to augment the part-time budget. Is run some of those shifts on Saturdays, pay it out of the grant. You have to write, you have to make three stops an hour. And they can usually answer calls in between, so I think it's a good double-edged sword for that.
A lot of small departments do that.
Yeah. I haven't heard back yet on the burn grant, still waiting for that. And I'm pretty confident that we're gonna get it.
Fifty thousand.
Yeah, it's fifty grand, and that's gonna buy us six new portable. And that's gonna buy us uh six new portable radios with digital capacity and hopefully six tasers.
Awesome.
We need to replace the taser that we currently have because the uh company Axon will no longer warranty or guarantee those uh tasers because they're out of date. So.
You said that before.
Yeah, yeah. So we're kind of running on borrowed time. Uh, other than, like I said, we've been unusually busy this time of the year. Uh, other than that.
Staffing was on the agenda.
What's that?
Staffing was on the agenda.
It was, yeah. So yeah, if you want to talk about that for a minute, I've got, I'm anticipating at least two leaving. One I know for sure, the other is up in the air. She took a job with uh WPI and we really haven't seen much or heard much from her since. So she went through their training program and I anticipate losing her, but Lucas Wise is definitely gone. He's already in his fourth phase of going to Worcester PD, so he's as good as gone. Did you replace Mike Sweet? No. You're not adding, you're you're replacing vacancies. Yeah, I have three candidates and I have three losses, basically. And it's a trained. So all three candidates are trained. They've all been put through their psyche valves, test, physicals, and they have experience and equipment. So the only equipment I really need to give them is probably shirt uh shirts and jackets. Where did they get psych and medical? So one of them we paid for, which was uh Lucy was on that interview process with us. So we he we sent him to everything already in anticipation of hiring him because it was a go-ahead at that point. The other two already had Dr. Madonna do their psychological evals from their current employers. So we're not paying for those. If that if that's where you're going with it. Yeah, that's one way. Yeah, they're all fairly recent uh psyche valves. One is a uh detective in training right now. He's an officer with a few years' experience. One just graduated the full-time academy eight months ago and is working full-time at, of all places, Worcester State. Both of these guys work at Worcester State and they just had that murder down there. So they're they're gonna come with experience and uh they're kind of the turnkey officers. It's not like we're bringing in fresh raw recruits that don't know the first thing about it, so.
Do you have any um turnover data? Like how many come in each year, how many go out?
For Ocam?
Yeah.
I don't, but I I will tell you this, we had a lot of people that stuck around for a long time. We had a lot more officers. Uh, COVID and police reform wiped us out. Charlie Baker's potting shot to law enforcement community was to pass uh police reform. Now Massachusetts, as Dawn knows, is the poster child for uh doing it right. Massachusetts has always been the the state that was looked at nationally as doing it right. For some unknown reason, they decided that we weren't doing it right and they had to change everything. And they passed laws that had previously already been approved ten, twenty years ago. And Dawn can tell you, you, he was probably a young officer. They took away our slappers, our uh uh, what do you call those um? The wrist things. Anyway, the claw, they took away the the claw. A lot of stuff that was very impactful to somebody's um body if you use them. And the chokehold, I had to laugh when they said, oh, you know, we're gonna do away with the chokehold, we're gonna make it absolutely illegal. They eliminated that twenty years ago. They don't even teach it in the curriculum. So I don't know why they felt the need to write all this into legislation when it was already there. I started in nineteen seventy-four and they did not teach the chokehold in seventy-four. Right. So again, the legislature. The one thing that does bother me about uh outlawing the chokehold though is if you're dying, somebody's killing you, they're in the act of murdering you. And you choke them out and live, they're gonna prosecute you because it's now against the law. That's what happens when they pass laws in four ten AM. Right. Okay. Yep. All the equipment's uh working fine. It sums up the maintenance. Vehicle's running good.
I'm curious um how Ocam compares uh with the rate of pay and um to uh other area towns.
We're uh we're lacking very much. So the average pay for a part-time patrolman now is starting rate is about twenty-six dollars an hour. And we're under twenty. That sergeant's make twenty dollars and fifteen cents an hour for a supervisor. Part-time supervisor.
That's why I was curious about the retention rate. Um end up spending more money to get get people a little bit of experience and then they leave.
So we've become what Boylston PD used to be. And he's probably gonna laugh. The revolving door of justice. You bring people in, you get them training, get the experience they need, they put their resumes out and then gone. And Matthew Matt Erosion's a good example of that. He actually went to Boylston of all places because Boylston now pays a a highly competitive wage. And uh, you know, we trained him, we brought him in, we trained him, we did everything and he actually joined the military and come back, worked for us for a short time, and then applied out because the money is better somewhere else.
I know the details really are the only benefit really.
Right.
Uh, because financially we're not.
Right.
Provided.
I think for the most part, the the main body of the people that we have here are here because they love the town of Ocam and and they do get a benefit to work in details. Other than that, I think they'd be gone too. And uh just a a footnote on all of this. Surrounding towns have no shame in coming to our offices and saying, jump ship, we pay more. Happens on the regular.
I think that transparency is a good thing um for Ocam residents to know where we're paying people as we look to the future.
I can't remember, did you ever tell Facebook page? Yes. The PD. Yep. Yeah, we post some stuff on there. Um I did a lot at the Hawk.
Kevin got a lot of attention here.
Awesome.
So I did an update on the Hawk recently. He uh he's doing better and it looks like he, you know, he may go through rehabilitation. We don't know. We'll see. Time will tell. Those quarterly reports you could afford. Well, Maribel has a, she put the most recent one on the uh website. And so she's giving me access to the website and I'm gonna have to sit down and figure it out. But I'm gonna start uploading the uh quarterly reports right to the website. Yeah, that'd be good. Then let everybody.
Come on over with the coffee. I'll show you. Don't forget the donuts.
See the stereotype? Bagels, bagels, bagels. There were one that went to WPI. Do they still have a rule that they cannot work for any other department? So I don't know. I I don't think so. Because my detective works for WPI. So I don't think they have that rule. And if they do, he's definitely violating it. And I'd hate to lose him. And he loves the town of Ocam. That's why he is still.
Just don't tell them about our YouTube channel.
Right?
Yeah, yeah. But for the most part, the people that stick around really dream about the town and uh they'd love to live here if they can afford it, um, you know, part-time salary, but that's not gonna happen.
If it's your, I mean, it's our replacement.
Your replacement, so. Yeah, I never did replace Mike and and uh I hated losing him, but out reasons he had to, you know, make that decision himself. For the next meeting, why don't you have him commit? Okay. Yeah, the good candidates and Lucy was on the uh interview for each one of them. I take that back. Uh Evan, she wasn't on Evans. Evan actually uh spent a lot of time in Ocam. He worked for Pioneer Incas. He's a security guard down there. Evan Gaylord lives in Chalton. Uh, been a police officer for six or seven years now. Just a a good kid. He gets it. Knows small towns, knows how, you know, it should be done.
Yeah.
Hi. Different you. Two, two of them. One of them is Jared, home day. I just want to make clear to the board that this individual also owns a firm. He did contact me via email six months, eight months ago, um interested in firm services. And now he's submitted an application as an individual. Um, and then submitted, sent his father's resume as well because it's a father-son company uh in case the board wanted to go with firm. Which he already knows we have firm. And then the second one made it very clear that she has no intention in leaving her full-time job in Lester. It would only be available one day a week in person on Fridays.
I agree. Did you both of them think? I think that um whatever, whoever we pick, I think we need to look at transferring current responsibilities of scanning and interacting between boards and the accounting that needs to leave the administrative.
I think I've expressed that to both of you.
It's it's many extra hours outside of the administrative assistance responsibilities that are uh being taken away um from other important things. So I I I think um both of these candidates are worthy of an interview.
Um, yes, and Lori, who is the accountant that is signed to Ocam through the current firm, said she'd be more than happy to sit in on the interview. If you would like, just from an accountant's perspective, know what questions to ask or, you know, her professional opinion. And yes, I just want to make it clear just one more time that once a new body is hired, I would like to be completely eliminated from the equation.
Soon as possible, we're spending a lot of money on insulting.
Now, for an interview. For an interview, I mean, I know that.
Could we do it on a Friday afternoon?
That's up to me. I mean, I'll reach out to them and pick a date. Maybe if you can give me two Fridays.
Yeah, any Friday.
Any Friday.
During my lunch break.
Only Friday I'm not available.
Not this Friday, so any other Friday in November.
Anytime after uh twelve is super good.
Let's look at the we just got the liaison signs. I was thinking budget season. If we each look to departments, they can communicate with us. Uh, might be a little easier to go through.
Yeah.
So what I was thinking is um highway police. You hear?
Okay.
I would take fire library. And Lucy would have the boards and committees at the school. Teacher. Things a little bit easier. People forced to sign the Maya.
Yes.
Insurance.
Yes, this is just the um retiree insurance, uh we know, even though the town does not offer it or for, you have to by law, offer it uh through Maya or acknowledge it. For no current employees.
In Arlington.
Yes, you have to offer it. No current employees involved.
What insurance is that? If I can have Brad Taylor?
Maya.
Yeah, and what is it about?
Retirees. Medics. Medics.
We don't currently have that?
We do.
We do have it?
We have to by law. We have to operate. We don't have to pay for it.
I'm confused.
I know. When someone retires.
Yep.
They go on the medics grant from the town that they pay a hundred percent of the cost.
Oh, bro.
Well, no.
Is there a portion? It's it's the full portion.
Full portion that they get to pay for.
When was this? Uh, when did this come in?
This, when you were on the board. When we went to Maya.
You were on the board. We did it last year. But.
Okay, so this this has nothing to do with the insurance that we've been talking about in the past.
It would be the the, I think the town meeting was to cover the costs of that.
Cover fifty percent of it was what the town meeting was. This is not that.
Okay.
This is the state law that we don't have a choice in.
I I did uh hear something about it from the state rep about the cherry sheet, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah.
Okay, so. Yeah, there's no cost in town.
And and Maya has already negotiated the best rates possible. We're in a group plan. That's, is it specific to Ocam or is it their group plan of all their?
No, specific to Ocam.
Okay. Um, do we have a motion?
Just a motion works up to.
Okay, I would move we accept the uh Maya health benefits for medics.
Second.
Hi.
Chapter ninety reimbursement.
Road is great. I've not been on Beach and Road.
Race tracks both.
I was, that's, yeah, but at least it keeps you in the right side of the lane because of the yellow.
Oh, we hope. That corner, it's not good. State reimbursement chapter ninety program for one hundred ninety-eight thousand seven hundred dollars in two.
I would move we, are we requesting or accepting? Uh, would we accept the we are, I move. We are, I move, we request the reimbursement for Hunt Road at. One hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars and two cents. Okay. Please, hi.
Second one is for one hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred twenty-four. Dollars and twenty-six cents for a beach and road.
I would move, we, we request the state reimbursement for. Beach and Road at one hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-six cents.
Does the board have any new business?
Other new business, just a matter of resignation from. MMA. Today.
I would move, we accept with regret. Bye. I believe we've received two town clerk applications. Either currently work in a role or formerly have worked. Where is it posted currently?
On the website, on MMA. And I don't have access to the Town Clerk Association. But I did ask the town clerk if she could send out an email. So it could be shared everywhere, or whatever their distribution. And then I also sent them an email separately, just like a contact link, asking if someone can send it. I having not heard anymore.
I think it would be beneficial to get. Some more applications if possible. But where it's mine.
Yeah. I didn't put a deadline, just because. Yeah. I just put interim to possibly, you know, permanent, but upon. I also.
If we could get it to that. On Clerk Association, I think that'd be great.
I also mentioned it to the TAs that I saw today. Meaning Hubberston's Town Administrator, Rutland's. Just to never know, like anybody who could. If they thought of anyone, or they could have put it out there.
And on, and Goby's meeting on Thursday, so I could bring it up. Just, and that's kind of where the regional small town. Could be beneficial.
The other thought was to possibly reach out to some of the other part-time town clerks. But I want to make sure that the board was okay with that. And the only concern with that too is though, with the primaries coming up in March, that is very time-consuming. And requires a lot, so I don't know how someone could do two towns. Unless there was like an assistant clerk for one town.
Which we should.
So if you guys are good with me reaching out to maybe some of the surrounding towns, just to.
Yeah. Whatever we can do to.
Okay.
We probably will have to make a decision. Interviews at the next meeting. I just had, I had the HR consultant with Barry in New Braintree and Rutland, so. Did we make any action on looking into that?
Discuss.
Okay, okay. So maybe for future, put that on the agenda. Or I don't know, Maribou can look into the options that. Rutland and Barry and New Braintree are looking at.
Oh, for the HR?
Yeah. And even MMA, we're part of that.
Yeah, because they list like HR stuff, yes.
And see what resources they have available that we could use.
Board of Health. No, I have more than one.
Yep. So if you want, I'd be happy to have given up the. The Board of Health. What to go? Sent to certified a letter. To the current owner of twenty-one Coldbrook. Who had not been responding to phone calls anymore. Or emails, so certified letter went out and was signed for. Requiring a response within thirty days. To address the ongoing. Issues surrounding the property. And as of now, there's not been any response. But that was sent out and all neighbors on Maple Street. Are received a. A letter with recommendations on how to maintain rodent-proof areas. Rats look for food. And if there's anything around for them to eat, they will populate. And apparently they populate quite well, like rabbits and. However, as the. Cold weather comes in, the food supply does go down. So it is believed from our health agent, who has become an expert in rats. That they will populate less during winter months, but. The property. Is just like, got to be sold, going to be sold. So now. The property owner has to take action to address. The issues.
Upper Omega Construction.
I, I said one more thing under no. I attended a meeting with Rutland Dispatch this morning. With. The community communications director in regards to the assessment for the town's. Portion in ours just went up about seven percent. And they will be sending out those invoices hopefully soon, and it's about sixty-five thousand, twenty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. They've been waiting just because if they get grant, where they can apply it towards it, then they would reduce the assessments for each town. But as of right now, that's where it stands. Just about four thousand dollars. Sixty-one thousand, eighty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents in this year. Sixty-five thousand, twenty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Oh, I've been delayed of meetings?
They do meetings, they're, they're trying to get on a schedule of quarterly, so they just had one with. The fire and police chiefs for the five towns that they're individuals, so police one day, fire another day. They communicated. Yeah. January ninth, they're doing a combined fire and police for the five towns. Just the chiefs. But yeah, quarterly, he'll just send out an email a little bit in advance. No Florida selectmen. And it is, well, no, it's for the town administrators, and nor am I that, but I just felt like I should just quickly go to bring back any information. It was a quick meeting, within an hour.
Last year, we. It's seventy-two, twenty-seven, eighty-six left over because rats came in and they reduced. So it goes up forward. But I expect that will come down.
Yeah, and that's what he's hoping, and that's why he's held off on sending the invoices.
He did do a really good job looking for grants.
Yes.
They probably have a grant person. Do they have a grant person in Rutland?
Actually, not yet.
Okay.
I think that's about the position they advertise for, but Mike has been doing all the work.
I asked about the radios. Portable radios, he says, nothing yet, but he continues to try. And he's made some good improvements, or his team has, with the fire department. I know that there was a little bit of a. Little hiccups that would happen that if they got a call, they wouldn't ring out the fire department. Chief Howell has made it very clear that he wants the department to grow and be more professional and be involved. So they've come, found certain solutions or tactics to make sure that they're involved, so everyone seems to be a little bit more on board.
Did they talk about a new tower?
They did, they, they're doing a new tower in South Berry, they're just waiting for the chief of. Berry to come back from deployment to get it squared away, but it's going to be at the fire station right on South Berry. Across from the Chinese restaurant.
The reason they're waiting for the, they gotta come back to deployment is because they're gonna put the tower on his property.
And he, and some of the equipment will go inside his station, so they want to make sure.
They're actually bringing it in the spot, he wants it because it is his property.
Yep, and, and some of the equipment will be inside his building too, so they feel like we're not gonna overstep by any means.
About having the access for six cell sites. To rent that tower.
That might help. Like.
It'll be capable of accepting six cell sites.
Yeah, and Hubberston's is up and running, not at full capacity yet, if they're, they do it in like steps. So they're about at twenty-five percent capacity. But yeah, they're moving in right directions, I mean, I must say that our assessment. Is a lot better than Hubberston's because they were not happy.
They're also repairing the Barry Tower as well, and they're starting to bring that one back up to full capacity. There, it's all borrowed equipment, they're waiting for the funding to buy new equipment or replace it. As soon as they do, Hubbitson is online, Barry's online, and I have seen an improvement in the last two weeks. Actually, quite an improvement.
And he said that once the Berry, the South Berry one is out of running, it will, will feel it a lot in OKM, will have a lot better service, so that's good.
Yeah, we feel it on the, the fires.
Yeah, yeah, that's what he said, that side will get much better reception.
Anything without toll?
Yeah, they're gonna gut it and replace it, they're all coming down.
Eventually.
So they're gonna replace the guts of all the towers because evidently they buy all the equipment from the cheapest bidder. And they didn't use the best stuff they could have used, like if they had gone with Motorola or Kenwood, we wouldn't be having this conversation. So the equipment is now thirteen years old. And they're gonna replace the equipment, OKM, they're already Hubbitson, Barry, put up the new power, and everything should be seamless after that. We talked a little bit about the umbrella of coverage too, because they have to project the umbrella, as you know. Towards the South Shore. And that kind of leaves Barry on the fringe of our umbrella, which is weird, like you'd think. I get better reception in Millville than I get. In Barry. It's for that reason. That frequency is very close to Boston frequency. That's right, we bleed into Rhode Island too.
The one other thing just he did mention, he did provide the minutes for the police and fire. Meetings, if you guys are interested, I can scan those and send them to you.
Yeah.
And he did state that on the last contract that each town signed, they. Granted by town council or their council, and they had to alternate the language on section one, just items one and two. So they, he would require a request for the board to sign a new contract, and he provided me with the old. You can see the difference. It's like the one that, this one was signed on November first, twenty-twenty-two. And the only items that are changed are one and two, so you guys can take a look at that, you don't have to do that tonight, you can put it on the next meeting if you'd like, I mean. He said it's just to make clearer language, and that came from their council.
Section one, one and two?
Yes.
I think that's very basic, it's semantics.
Yeah.
So I would move, we accept the amended. Regional district. As in the fifth twenty-five. Yep.
Thank you.
We did get information from the building commissioner. On the arch. And he confirmed that it does require it to go through the. Building Commissioner process.
He did double-check with the state building commissioner, agree.
I don't know if we need to, is there a contact? What group is responsible? I know I was corrected at the last meeting, but let's just move.
The historical association.
What, they manage the arch project, or was it another group?
I know, they said the association is different than.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't.
But I think it was.
So we probably need to share that information with.
Well, we can start off by contacting Mr. Dugan, who's been the lead on that whole project and then.
Yep.
So they need the building, like a permit.
And I wish there was, I wish they had access to a. Someone who could draw up plans for them.
The, the association's a private entity, this is a town cemetery. I don't know how you can. Utilize a private entity. To represent the town on town property, I'm just throwing that out.
It's not the association, it's the commission. Not the association.
And those are the three members of the.
Which are DC, Greg Spiny.
And Duke.
And now Matt Brunau.
Brunau.
Okay. Oh, Dugan's on it?
No, he's on the historical association.
I thought he was also on the secretary.
No.
Okay.
I think he was brought, he took in a lot of the work because he knew a lot of the history.
I did attend a walk through the association, the historical association on Saturday. And I think there were about 20 residents that participated going through Coldbrook Springs that the state so kindly took away. And I feel they're still sore about it, but it was very well done. And it's great work that the private entity does for the town of Okem. We're fortunate to keep that history. Yeah.
Yeah. All business. We have the placement of the senior center door.
First I've heard of it.
Is it robbing out?
No, it is. Yes, definitely.
The Alpro Mega Construction gave us a quote, excuse me, $1,700 material labor disposal.
And this is one of the things.
Who to lock? I get, I mean, would you, and is the handle like handicap accessible handle? I think it's a knob.
It's the bar here.
Oh, it is a bar? Okay.
It is a bar. Both of them are bars.
I mean, could, could we, if we funded this, accepted the bid and funded it, could we also, I don't know if the council agent has looked at the type of lock for the senior center. I know, you know, the church has a.
It would be much better for us to have a keypad because we have one set of keys. So it would be better to have a keypad where other members, because right now I'm the one who comes and covers time at the senior center. So I have the key. If I need a replacement, they either come through upstairs and go down or they, they don't get in.
They're looking at here. Of all these doors.
Oh, okay.
So for now, just swap the the current handle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're probably not the do not replicate keys.
No.
Huskies right now.
Yeah.
So I would move that we cover the cost of replacement door from our funds.
Yes, and that was allocated initially at an estimate of $2,000. So that.
Excepting that estimate of 17. Of the only bid.
Thank you.
Is anyone keeping an eye on what the libraries don't know what the parking lot?
No, I just saw that today.
Mentioned to me last week, they're going to be cutting more of the parking lot to put the handicapped parking spot in. I, I feel they should be talking to the board selection or something. We own that, we own that property. They've already gone and done what they've done. They just do what they want to do. I think somebody should be watching that to see what's going on. When I was told last week, they may be cutting more of the parking lot out to put the handicap parking spot in. And looking at it in where that handicap parking spot is, there's a manhole for the septic system. I just think someone needs to step on that. Stop just doing what they want to do. I'm, I'm going to bring this up again. I think Mr. Taylor was at the meeting when we had quite a while back. If they did what they did, that, that doesn't put, I'm not going to follow the parking lot. Because now I have no place to push the snow, but in front of the fancy foyer that they put down on the bottom of that building. With all the apparatus, I have no place to push the snow. And at that meeting, Lisa Huntington said, fine, we'll take care of the flower. I believe that, I hope that's in the minutes.
That's correct.
Again, they're going to cut more of the parking lot.
Okay.
We want executive session on the chapter 39, section 23B, subsection three. The 30th, 2023, just executive session, back and open session. Yeah, 9:31.
Thank you.
To approve the contract between the town of Okem and Highway Superintendent Josh Curry.
I would move that we accept the contract for the highway superintendent with the town of Okem and Ken and Curry.
Second, all favor.
Aye.
Aye.